All right, everybody. Welcome to the Evening Town Hall Meeting for God is Big Enough. So glad that y'all are here tonight. Here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have some information on the screen behind me and also for those who are joining with us online, you'll see this as well. In just a few minutes, we're gonna open in prayer. We need to bathe this whole thing in prayer and not just as a courtesy prayer, but really bathe the whole thing in prayer. We're gonna have some time to answer some basic questions that you all are going to have after the Overstreets and the Brassils kind of give a general overview of what's happening. We're gonna hear from them about the work from the finance team and the trustees team that helped the ELLT make the decision they made to move forward. And we're trying to get some input from you all. What do we need to be aware of as we continue to move forward? But we also need to be clear that no decisions about anything further are gonna be made tonight. This is more make sure that we have an opportunity to talk about it, ask questions, give the leadership an opportunity to make some adjustments as needed so that we can be sure we're doing what we need to do. So it's a pretty special night, so thank you all for being here. How many of you have been a part of a town hall type meeting before? Yeah, some of you have. Do town halls always go super great? Yeah, sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. So we're, hey, we're Acton Methodist, so we've got some guidelines as to how we're gonna do some things because we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the guidelines or expectations for how we're gonna do town hall is that everyone gets to participate. If you have a question, just ask it. There's no harm, no foul, no bad questions. Assume that everyone has great intentions for the church family to thrive. So we're just assuming everybody's got the best interest of the church at heart. We're not making any other assumptions. And when we listen to either the chairs or each other in the pews, we're going to listen to learn, not just reply. You know, don't be thinking about what you want to say. Maybe just listen first and see what happens. We're gonna try to offer positive suggestions. So if you think something could be done differently, we're gonna, we're gonna share it positively, okay? And we'd love for everybody to be aware of your body language and your tone. That matters. It's not just the information you're sharing, but how you're sharing it. And we're gonna enjoy the fellowship time tonight. So I want to share with you as we go into a time of prayer then, just a minute, Haliani's gonna lead us in a song. And I think there were some song sheets at the back, correct? Yeah, if you didn't grab one, there's one right there. Maybe Pastor Christie can get one to you. I want you to keep in mind some things as we go into this time. This is, this is, this is a pretty big deal. And it's a pretty big deal because of what the Lord's doing. And I want to remind you, in the Old Testament, in Second Chronicles, when God had told Solomon and David to build a temple, and Solomon did that, he fulfilled that. And then at the dedication of the building that was set apart for God to reside in, so God's people would always know where God was at that moment, the Lord said something interesting to Solomon, and he says this, and some of you have heard this, so you know this, that "If my people," at the dedication of this building, like brick and mortar, he said, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and I will forgive their sin and I will heal their land." At the dedication of the building, he was really focused more on the heart of the people. Now, God had some pretty exacting specifications for what that building was gonna look like, but at the end of the day, it wasn't just about the building, it was the heart of the people. And I think as we talk about the capital campaign, yes, we're focusing on the building, but if our hearts aren't in the right spot, then it's not gonna be for anything. In fact, in Proverbs, actually Psalms, Psalm 127, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the builder's labor is vain." So we've gotta make sure we're putting the first thing first or the first person first. And then lastly, just to make sure we're keeping everything in mind, when Jesus ascended into heaven, he gave the disciples kind of a job to focus on, which was focused on their attitude and culture and values. And he said to all the disciples, he said, "All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Therefore, go," like where they were there, "go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to obey everything I have commanded you, and surely I am with you always to the very end of the age." So you may be wondering, what does that have to do with what we're talking about? Actually, it has everything to do with what we're talking about. So the building is not the object of our affection. The building is the launching point to our mission. We are to go. But then as we go and we encounter folks and we make disciples, we do that by sometimes using this church campus as a vehicle to teach them to obey and to fall in love with the Lord, so they might see everything that God created them for. So this, this building and these campuses are all tools for ministry. They're not the object of our worship, they're tools. So how can we make them the best tools possible for us to do what we're called to do, which is to love where we live and make disciples of Jesus Christ? So I want to pray for you, and then after I pray for you, Haliani's gonna lead us in worship, okay? Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for tonight, and I thank you for these folks who are gathered here and the folks who are online with us and the folks who will watch this later, whenever it's the right time for them. God, would your spirit move now and then in whatever way you want to move so that we might understand the full breadth and depth and height and length of your grace and also what your plans are, Lord? We want you to do what only you can do, and we want to keep a lookout for what you're doing so we can join in with you. And we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. So every time we are faced with a challenge, we must remember that our God is greater, greater than our difficulties, greater than our struggles, greater than the mountain that's in front of us. So with that in mind, we're going to sing this song. And then at the end, once we realize how great our God is, what else can we do but to trust and obey? So that's how we're going to end. So let's sing together. We sing. Keeper of the day and the night, Holder of the sun in the sky, You command the waters and the wind. There's not one thing you're not greater than. Greater than the mountain that's in front of me. You are greater, so much greater. Greater than the power of the enemy. You are greater, so much greater. Faithful over all of my days, God above the storms that I face. My hope is in your name and nothing less. There's not one thing you're not greater than. Greater than the mountain that's in front of me. You are greater, so much greater. Greater than the power of the enemy. You are greater, so much greater. We sing. Trust and obey, for there's no other way To be happy in Jesus, but to trust and obey. So much greater. Amen. You may be seen.
Good evening. Hadn't figured out from that there that things have changed since this morning, and so I'm not good with change. Still getting me? Okay. But anyway, I wanted to say that I was a little discombobulated this morning at the 11 o'clock presentation, and it finally dawned on me when we were home that in my former working life, that when I was in front of a group of people and there were slides behind me, I had a red laser pointer, and I don't have that. So things, things are still a mess. Anyway, I'm gonna talk to this slide, and while it says, it looks like I'm part of the ELLT, I'm not, so I'm speaking on your behalf. But our lay leadership team is excited about what's going on with our church. Lots of things are happening, lots of positive stuff. But they recognized last year that there are things we need to do to take care of our physical plant. And so they started the process back then. And what we want to do is invest in the future, if you will. We want to continue a process where we continue to grow. And as I said this morning, when I think of a church, this church, having looked forward and done something for the future, I think of our youth building. Ann and I were not members at the time that was done, but somebody back in nearly 20 years ago thought we needed a good world-class youth facility. And so it was built. And every time I go into that building, I'm just amazed that, that we have that kind of facility. And there's so much good stuff going on out there right now. So that was an instance where somebody said, "Let's look to the future." So now in 2021, we have an outstanding youth program in literally a world-class facility. So that's kind of what we're talking about. Would you do my next slide, please? So why is this project timely now? In my words, we want to continue to grow both our ministries and our outreach. And, and to do that, we know that people, they're drawn to churches and a lot of times the facility itself. And, and so this is what we're looking forward to. Now, as I said, they started the process last year, but we've recognized that for years, our, our building has needed attention that is, has not received. And Ann and I, at our, our former church in Arlington, First Church Arlington, we went through the flip side of this coin and not getting out in front of it. Because we had one summer, two of the very large rooftop chillers failed. Of course, there was no budget for it at the time, and it, just getting, getting it done, getting people, it was a big problem. And so we've been through the bad side of, of the decision not to move, move ahead. And so from our standpoint, it, it just so makes sense that we get out in front of this, we have a campaign to look after the facility. If, if we're going to maintain the church, we need to maintain the facility. And later on, Brady will talk about some of the items on the, on the thing, and of course, making the North Ex more inviting, making it more pleasing to people to come in. It, it's true that when visitors come in, they judge us somewhat by the facilities, what it looks like. And so that's what's behind what we're trying to do and why we think now is the time to start it.
Our church has a rich history. We're in our third century of existence. In 1899, they had the largest group of people that gathered together to decide on building our original building, which was the White Chapel. And it's still standing, still being used today after all those years. In 1971, we built the new Acton Methodist Church, which was the administrative area right now. But at that time, it was our, our church. And that campaign was $30,000. We all wish it was $30,000 today, but it's not. In 1976, we needed space for nursery and some adult Sunday School classes. So there was another building campaign that went on. A bond drive was initiated in 1982 to build the Christian Life Center. Think about how many activities we have in the Christian Life Center. Lots. From celebrations to meals after memorial services, all kinds of things have taken place in that. As a matter of fact, our 50th wedding anniversary celebration was in the CLC. In 1987, I can't see, 1987, ground was broken for the present sanctuary where we're sitting right now. It was consecrated in 1989, and we've been using it all this time. We then had a need for some adult Sunday School classes. I'm sorry, I skipped the youth building. That's pretty important. In 1999, we raised funds for the current youth building. And as Billy said, that building has been well-used. Blake is doing a fantastic job out there. We had 10 youths through this year of pandemic that, that joined, that were confirmed and joined the church and declared their faith in Jesus. And that's awesome. I'm so impressed about that. And without that place for them to meet, they might not have been able to meet this year. So it's been, it's been a great thing that we've had that. And then there was a need for some adult classroom space and a desire to open a preschool. And so that led to our current education building, and that was in 2007. Our current building is adequate with regard to space. So this capital campaign is a little different than most capital campaigns, because most of the time, they involve new building, which is really exciting. And as Brady will talk about in a little bit, most of our need right now is to take good care of the space that God has given us. We've been very blessed through the foresight and faithful giving of those who've come before us to have what we have. We just need to be sure that we have that same foresight and faithful giving that we can take care of what we have. So I am so excited about this finally starting. Like we said, we've waited a year, and we were about a week away from starting things last year when the pandemic came along. So we're excited, and I hope you're as excited as well.
Hi there. I'm Vanessa, for those of you I haven't met. So why are we calling this campaign "God is Big Enough"? I think we keep referring to it as the Capital Funds Campaign, but it's important to remember that God is big enough. A great reminder and a fantastic reminder is that the church is God's idea. He's the head. And I love this analogy, that we are called to play "Follow the Leader." It's simplistic that we can all, as children, adults, we can all play "Follow the Leader." God's hopes and dreams for our church are so much bigger than what any of us can imagine. And in order for us to do what we need to do and go where we need to go, we need to take care of what the Lord has given us. And that's this beautiful church campus. And I think that's important to remember, that we are doing things out in the community, we're doing things with and for each other because of what God has given us. And we also need to trust God. Trust God and be on the lookout for what God is doing so that we can join with Him. I think the notes say, "Let's go, let's keep going together." Pastor Wade said it on Sunday, Easter Sunday. He said, "Let's go, people." I love it. He said, "Let's go, people." And so we might have to have a new campaign or a T-shirt with "Let's Go People," because I love it. So that is why we are calling this "God is Big Enough" this campaign. And of course, just like Ann was saying, at the beginning of last year, we were ready to go with this. And then the pandemic hit us. So is it too soon after COVID to do something like this? We don't believe so. Listen to this, and I think this is amazing. During the pandemic, our church didn't hide. We didn't shrink and hide. We did something so much more. We did something, things, so many things, so much bigger than what anyone could imagine. In 2020, our church, our church contributions exceeded expenses by $49,000. Also, $35,000 was donated to provide 715 Granberry ISD staff gift cards. Can you imagine? I, I know several teachers and coaches that teach here in Granberry ISD, and they got those gift cards. It's amazing. And then 775 children in our community received Christmas gifts through the generosity of our church, through all of us. And most importantly, I think it was Ann that shared it, that in 2020, 10 students placed their faith in Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. And in addition to that, 10 adults and children were baptized. So that is why God is big enough.
So as we, as we talk about things like, we're not, this is a capital campaign fund that is gonna be geared more towards getting this facility caught back up and not so much a brand-new building. So, so why can that not be achieved through, through the general reserve budget? Well, a good reason for that is for at least a decade, this church was not able to meet its financial goals in order to sustain itself. About four years ago, there was a, a big shift in the right direction. And in 2019 was the first year that this church was able to, to create a positive net revenue. So I want to give a round of applause that in 2019 and 2020, this church had a positive revenue for the first time in a very long time. And so, so, so there's things that need to be done, and I don't want to talk about kicking the can down the curb, so to speak, but when there's not necessarily money to do things, there's not money to do things. So, so now that we're, now that we're in a positive direction, we want to continue that positive direction and keep this momentum going so that we can, we can take care of things that need to be done. The two ways that I think about this is first, first and foremost is financial. And so, so that's kind of what I was talking about before. But, but also in a more spiritual manner, wise man once told me that we want to be worship-ready. And that was Pastor Randy. He told me that today. This, this facility needs to be worship-ready, and we want to make sure that we can bring people to Christ that do not know Christ, and we want to nurture disciples that need to be nurtured. And, and we cannot do that and grow without, without maintaining this facility and getting back to, getting back to net zero. So we want to, we want to get back to zero so we can be actionary and not reactionary. We want to be on the offensive and not the defensive when it comes to loving God. So, so that's really what we're about when we're talking about why can't maintenance be funded through the general budget? So, so when we talk about being actionary instead of reactionary, we want to talk about what is the "When God Calls" Fund? So, so "When God Calls" Fund is gonna be a portion allotted from this, this capital funds campaign that we want to put towards being able to do God's work. So instead of, instead of using that money to, to be on the defensive, where we just need to make repairs, fix things like, like leaks, we want to have that done already so we can put money towards reaching out and doing God's work. So whether that be, whether that be giving extra money for, for a natural disaster that happens and occurs, whether that be, whether that be for a Christmas fund, whether it be for, for gift cards to the, to the school, for, for employees at the school. So, so you can see there just, just any kinds of positive outreach that we can do for the community and outward and even on a worldwide scale. So, and a little bit of personal history for me. I remember when, when this sanctuary, when I was a young child, was not even built yet. And it was just, just about to happen. We would, we would, there was a, another church that was right where the, where the office buildings are now. And so you have the, the two hallways that kind of go around the two office buildings. If I remember correctly, those were, those didn't exist. And because for a long time, there were stained glass windows, and so the sanctuary would be right in the middle there. So, so between those two hallways was the church and the sanctuary that was built, the church that was built in the 70s. And then there was a hallway that went on and went into the old sanctuary, which we would use as the youth building. So, and the CLC existed. So to see how far that we've come along and utilized every facility for the past 130-plus years is just incredibly amazing. So, so we've got this capital funds campaign, and we've got this beautiful sanctuary that's in here. We're not, we're not trying to renovate this thing and turn it into the Vatican. But, but what we do want to do is, is honor what's here and honor our history. And we want to be able to, to stay relevant with the current times. And so that is, that is really one of the most important things of this capital funds campaign. We want to stay actionary, not reactionary. So, goals. What are our goals? Most of this stuff has been allotted with the help of the trustees. And so several things when it comes to renovations. We've got 33 HVAC systems that are out here across all of the campuses. Throughout this, this three-year period, we want to replace 17 of those. And, and it would occur during that three-year time period. So renovations, things we want to do are necessary improvements, like you can see here. We want to renovate the North Ex, restrooms, children's area, CLC improvements, Rancho Brazos. We've got buildings. So Rancho Brazos, you know, helping out there, there was a time in, in January, the food drive every third Thursday, there was, there was more food given and dropped off that day than, than the, that was left over, almost that, that Rancho Brazos could even keep in-house. We did everything we could do to store frozen foods, to store refrigerated foods. I mean, you know, storing cans is one thing, but when you literally have, have goods that have to have a place to be stored in cold environments, and there's only so many refrigerators and there's only so many freezers, it's a scary thing to, to know that people are hungry and that there's food that could possibly go to waste. And so there's just this, seems like this overabundance. And then two weeks later, this historic cold spell hits, and Rancho Brazos is giving out food, and all of that food was gone, not to mention all of the other surpluses. So it's just a testament that we really need to spend money to help upkeep Rancho Brazos. and keep it going with the help of storage, whether it be dry storage as well as cold storage. So, one, one other important thing, and I misspoke a little bit earlier today. We do have plans, kind of phase one, for, for our, our septic system, converting that into, into getting tied in with the AMUD sewage system. Right now, this entire campus that you see is on a septic system. And, and we can't be ministry-ready without really getting that tied into a sewer system. Prime example would be during this last cold, cold spell, we could not, we could not harbor people that didn't have power or water here because, because we couldn't sustain people staying here for an extended period of time without, without causing the septic system to back up. So, so those are the kinds of things that we talk about when we need to be ministry-ready. So, so we just ask that, that you think about it and pray about it and, and help this church grow just like we do. And right now, we'd like to see if anyone has any questions. We would be more than happy to answer them. And if we can't, I bet we know someone who can out here.
The renovations and you had, I think it was called building improvements. What's the difference there?
Well, so renovations would, would be more allotted towards things here. They, they do kind of coincide. So building improvements would be a lot of things like the Northex, sanctuary improvements. Buildings, you know, also kind of coincide. So we've got the White Chapel, which is allotted for that area. And then, they, they do kind of coincide a little bit. Because what we talk about when, when we talk about this $1.75 million budget is that it all pretty much needs to be done. We, we expect to, to truly get this much money over a three-year period. And so this is, this is a skinny budget of what we really need to have done for this church.
So, so I agree HVAC, we're gonna have to pay for that no matter what, right? At some point, we have to do that. But I, I kind of question the renovations. I mean, some of that sounds like remodeling as opposed to renovations. So without more detail, I feel like it's hard to sell that, right? I mean, if you're gonna go renovate your house, you've got a plan of what you're gonna renovate. And then the auto, audiovisual, I'm a little concerned because how many Lord's Acres have we had over the last several years where funds were dedicated to that? Where's that money?
Some of that money was used this year. We had several pieces of equipment that failed. And we were fortunately able to take care of them because of the fact that we had some of that money. It's not enough to do all the things that need to be done. But fortunately, we were able this year to go immediately to online worship when a lot of other churches could not do that. And we want to be sure that, being as important a ministry as that is, that we're ready for whatever we need to do. So all those things are expensive. They are also, they expire after a certain period of time, which you probably know. You know, you can't keep your home computer forever. It has to be replaced because it starts operating really slowly. So the same kind of thing is, is needing to be done here. The renovations and improvements are things that would, will help us to maintain this building in the state that we would all hope that it would stay in. It's run down in certain places. There are things that we need to do to spruce it up, to make it ministry-ready. We don't have the details totally at this point because a lot depends on how this campaign goes. We are not anticipating doing a, a loan or borrowing money of any kind. And so we will be paying out of that capital fund money, piece by piece, the parts that we need to do. And of course, we do all know those air conditioners are in bad shape, like you said.
And I think one thing to add is that, like Ann said, we don't have all the answers yet. We don't know the answers. But the, and I'm gonna, I don't know the exact term, the small groups or the small, small groups?
Subgroups.
Yep. That are gonna be meeting. I think that's the, the purpose, you know? To have these conversations and to determine, to determine exactly what is necessary, what's needed and what can we all go together and conquer.
Yeah, and I can speak for some of the audio and visual things that, that have happened that you may not see. We have a brand-new digital board up there that we just installed within the past months. We have all of the, all of the equipment for the, for the internet and the live feeds. All of that has just been purchased and, and it was purchased right before the pandemic happened. So luckily, just by the grace of God, we were able to be really improved in that aspect right before that hit. So a lot of the audio and visual stuff you don't see, but, but it is happening. And there, there is more that needs to be, that needs to be done. These are the, these are the same speakers I remember from when this place opened in 1989, so.
I would like to address that if I could. I'm Alan, I'm part of the finance team. The, the equipment that Brian talked about has used funds from that Lord's Acre. The Lord's Acre raised $60,000, $65,000 for audio equipment, which was about half of what was bid to replace the needed equipment. So part of the funds have been used to upgrade, as has been alluded to already. The others are still there. It's in designated funds and being held. So it is not as if it's been used to pay bills. It is still there and it is in designated funds. While I've got the microphone, I've always got to say something. So I, one of the questions that I've forgotten now which one of you addressed is, is now the time. And last year, when we were talking about a little over $3 million before the pandemic hit, I'll be honest with you, I was on the finance team and I was on the LLT and I sweated bullets over that. Maybe that wasn't the right time. It all, it didn't happen. But from there to now, this church is ready. And I'm, I'm speaking for Alan here. I think this church is ready. Today, we have a church body that loves where we live and we love our mission to change people's lives through their relationship with Christ. I think our church body as a whole is there. We have a strong visionary leadership team. While we have that team in place, we need to be ready to follow where God leads. And lastly, the church has made huge strides. I think it was Ann that mentioned the change, or I'm not sure. The change that's taken place over a four-year period. The changes from huge, huge deficits to small, consistent surpluses. And the surpluses aren't there to build a storehouse, to hold money, to hoard. To me, when we have those surpluses, we're putting ourselves in the position to move forward as God would have us move. So I think the church is in a world of different place than we were even, even this point last year. I truly do. We're three months into 2021 and we are in such a better position this year versus where we have been in your past, just three months into the year. So that we need to celebrate and we need to give glory to God. But to me, we're in the position to do this today.
Hi, I'm Tom Davis. So I've had the pleasure of leading the trustees for the last two years. We joined the church about three and a half, four years ago. And when I walked through the doors, I was like, "This place is amazing. Look at how huge this campus is." And, and after a couple of years on the trustees, you kind of peel back. You know, you kind of see what's, you see what the, you know, the next layer of things. And certainly my eyes have been opened as I've worked with Pastor Randy and our trustees team to kind of see what those needs are and be that reactionary group that is trying to keep the church ministry-ready for, and that's really inviting. It's safe. And whatever that ministry activity is that walks in the door that day, whether it's a new family with little kids that are looking for where to go and a, a place for the nursery, whether that's somebody, the scouts who use the facility. So whatever that activity is, when they walk in the door, it's inviting, it's safe, it's ready to execute that ministry. So that's kind of what, what we're driving at with that ministry-ready concept. So the trustees have put, in over the last couple of years, really kind of, I've been collecting input from lots of different places. Some of it just with my own eyes, as you look at huge stains in the ceiling and things that need roof repairs that have been partially done, but the fix-it work's not all done yet. So we've been collecting input from lots of different places and from lots of different people about what the needs are. And those items that, the goals, those buckets, if you want to call it that, there's about 50 items on a, on a spreadsheet that make that up. So renovations might be a dozen different line items. Everything from rancho to, you know, carpets and paint. And a lot of it is remodel-related stuff. So carpets, paint, freshen up. I think we have a sub-team that's meeting, that's in the planning to kind of line out. So what we don't have, we have these allocations. We have some visions of areas that need help. What we don't have is that creative, right now, the talent to say, "What do we need to do with the Northex to really make it pop?" you might say. So that team is being formed and, and we'll, we'll take your input for that, for sure. That and other, so if you're seeing needs, I was told by somebody just the other week that they were, you know, they can't see their music on stage. So it's kind of like, so that's an obvious place, you know, like I've got lights in my eyes and I can't read my music. So we're listening and that's an item on our sheet. And as soon as we can get to that, we're gonna do that. So the spreadsheet of these 50 items is prioritized based on the ministry impact and when we think they need to be done. So we kind of have a plan. And so those 50 things are like 50 different little mini projects, you know? And they all need some planning and they need to go scope it and get pricing and do all these things. And we are moving forward with some of those things. So there is probably three to four level of detail behind what Brady had on the screen and what you've, on you, you've got on your flyer. So, but, so we're ready to kind of launch this thing. We're excited about where this is going. It sounds like a little daunting from somebody who's looking at maybe having to execute all these things. That's just me being a regular person, but God is big enough. So as we are blessed, we will do our very best to execute a plan that updates these facilities, gets the ministry-ready in a variety of ways, as we've already talked about. So is that, any questions for me from trustees?
Tom, can you either repeat it or let him use the microphone?
Oh, yeah. He said, he said, "What's the number one priority that needs to be done?" So we do have about six number one priorities. And priorities like many things are human-related and, you know, how do you come up with that? So on one hand, one of our highest priorities to execute is to get HVAC stuff going. So we're actually coming up on a summer period. We want to get, there's a second sanctuary AC unit. We do have some money still in Lord's Acre that we're actually, I want to break that away and, and go, if we can afford to do it with the money that's left over, go do the other HVAC unit for the sanctuary. It's about 50 grand for that one item. There are some other things in the youth building. If you've been to the youth building, it is in the category of remodel paint. It's very dark in there. And also the paint in there is very outdated. And there is a, the ministry needs are always changing out there. And what we're finding is that the classrooms are very small. So we're trying to, we're trying to knock down one of the walls to actually expand the classrooms to make it more functional for what they need. So we're trying to listen to the, you know, the different ministry needs of the church and take our cues in that way. Let me see what else I might have on my sheet here. Oh, the restroom. I don't know if you ever walked into the, the one restroom that everybody uses is the one right out here. So I don't take a look around on that. That's actually a high priority because I'm thinking that's something that as people come in, what facility do they use as a restroom? They use that one. And if you, if you haven't looked around at that, I mean, I invite you to take a look. It's clean, it's ready to work, but it's, it needs some help. So that's pretty high up our list. There's a lot of restrooms that need attention. That is just one, that's one of the high, high point ones. Oh, the septic system. So, yeah. So I don't know if you remember back to last year's flyer, there was a, a challenge portion of that that had the septic system. I think it was like one and a quarter million dollars or something. It was this huge price tag. So what we decided we would do is try to, we know this is going to be a phased approach. We've already got some data from AMUD. And I think, I think we're looking at at least a couple hundred grand just in AMUD costs. We know we've got a design and permit and do all the upfront things before we can actually put something on the street for like a construction project to start digging and connecting and putting in the lift station. So what this, what's in here right now in the grounds portion, part of that is the design phase where we would understand the true costs. We'd be investing in basically, so we'd know exactly what this thing looks like. This tie-in, right, right now, it's just a concept. We know we have a lift station. We know we have four septic systems that all need to be tied together and transferred to the lift station. But we don't know where the pipes are going and how much it's gonna cost to install a lift station and all that kind of stuff. So the design thing would actually be on paper, investing in that future construction project. So I don't think unless we are truly blessed with another, you know, million or whatever it costs over, over what we're already planning, that would be a subsequent project. But we'd be in a position to say, "This is what it costs." We could go borrow the money if we wanted to at that point. So we are investing in that, but realizing it's probably a three-to-five-year deal at best. We're gonna invest in the design, which has to be done anyway, before we can actually execute a construction project. Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions for trustees? Any other questions at all? I'm gonna give it back to Billy. Uh-oh. Well, I got the mic. I guess I can.
Hey, guys. Hello, online people. I just, I'm gonna hold this way out here. It is, it is difficult to get excited about words like renovations and building improvements. And I absolutely get it. But I, I want to make it personal just really quickly. One of the things that we are going to do in the renovations and the building improvements is add a bathroom that is accessible for those with, with, with needs that can't go into a, a normal restroom facility. So I have a member of my family who came to the church and, and loves it here and has, has since joined the church. But when they come and they have to use the facilities, Pastor Randy or whomever on the safety team is nearest has to block off the entire bathroom so that her spouse can, can take her in and help her. And that's not being hospitable. That's not inviting people from the help her. And that's not being hospitable. That's not inviting people from the community into this space. It's not expecting for all of God's children to come here. Another instance of accessibility issues, it's not just the bathroom that we've got to have, but there have been several, oh, excuse me, I have my back to y'all, I'm sorry. There have been several of our, our members, our partners, people who've been here for years, as well as new folks, who have said, I want to play the bells. I want to read. And there was one who, who wanted to, to help us with our Advent candles, and they couldn't because they couldn't get up the steps. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is adding a lift so that those in wheelchairs or those in walkers or, or those who, who may just not be able to climb stairs for whatever reason can still be a part of the service, can still use their gifts, can still sing and play and speak and read and, and preach, right? And so while paint and carpet may not seem like a big deal, we've, we've got a lot of things that we need to take care of. We can't have walkers tripping on carpet. We can't have people come in and not be able to use the facilities because we don't have one that's accessible. And it's, it breaks my heart that someone wants to, to ring for the Lord and can't because they can't get up the platform. So it's, it's money and, and it's a capital campaign, but when we talk about this being ministry, it is people, y'all. It is, it is brothers and sisters. It's mamas and daddies. It's babies. It's, it's, it's our family, and we're not ready for them yet. And so we've got to do this. We've got to get ready for the people, not just who are coming, but who are, who are here and who want to step out, right? And so it's, it's, it's us. And, and I just, I wanted to share that with you. And it's not just about the facilities. There's so many more personal stories about how this is going to absolutely change the lives of the community around us. It just is. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said tonight.
Yeah. There's, there's, there's great opportunities. Every challenge presents an opportunity in how is it that we're gonna respond as a people of faith. And I think it's really, really important for us to, yes, be focused on the projects and focused on the, the hard work that's involved with, with doing a capital funds campaign and asking people to go above and beyond their normal giving. But to, just to go back to what I said earlier, like if, if, if we do all that we can do, but we don't seek out what, what only the Lord can do, then we've missed the boat on this. So a couple of things I want you to keep in mind is when you leave tonight, over on the left-hand side, there's a table that Stephen Maria Reed will be stationed at. It's an opportunity for you to sign up to attend one of the advanced home gatherings that we will have. At these advanced home gatherings, you're gonna hear a little bit more from our chairs. You're gonna hear a little bit more from me about why I believe that this campaign is super important. You're gonna hear a little bit more details from Jennifer Tyler, who is the one who's helping us with this capital funds campaign. And you're gonna get more information in your hands. You, you're not gonna be asked to make a commitment at that time, but you're gonna be given the opportunity to begin to really ponder what role you might play. The campaign itself officially begins the last Sunday of April. So on that last Sunday of April, begins a five-week focus of the church of God is Big Enough. And then on May 23rd, that's gonna be our Celebration Sunday. That's where we're gonna ask people to, to, at that point, after this season of really discerning what the Lord is doing, that people would give their, their pledges for what this three-year campaign will look like. We, we don't want it to just be a financial transaction. We want it to be a spiritual movement. How is God leading you to be a part of what is going on here in the church, not just for right now in the present, but for the generations to come? Like the folks who built that White Chapel back in 1899, they didn't know who you were, but they stepped forward in faith. And the ones who've done all the projects since then, youth building back twenty years ago, I was here when that youth building was built. When that building was built, they weren't thinking of you. They were thinking of the generations to come. And so we think of not only in the present, but in the future, and we all get to be a part of that. So as we leave today, I want to invite you to do that. Also, I want to invite you, you might see these black God is Big Enough bracelets. They're a different version than the God is Big Enough bracelet set we've had before, and plus, they're black, so they fashionably go with everything that you can wear. And so we want you to make sure that you grab one. And it's also a great conversation starter for people who may have had the white, red, red, white and blue one. They may go, why is, why do you have the black one? And it's a great opportunity to say, well, God is big enough, and here's, here's how that's working here. And so we'd love to give you that opportunity. I, I want to invite Nell to come forward and, and pray for us. And at the conclusion of that prayer, I would like to invite anyone, and Halle Ali's gonna come and maybe play in, in the background. After Nell leads us in prayer, it's gonna be really an invitation for all those who feel led to, to come and humble yourselves before the Lord. You remember what God told Solomon to tell God's people? "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face, I will hear their prayer. I will heal them and, and affect the whole nation." This isn't just about a transaction. This is about being obedient to the Lord, and maybe it begins with us being on our knees first, and then the details will work itself out. And then as you come, Neil, you say as long as you want to, and then when you get ready to leave, just go out, and I know Stephen Maria will be waiting for you out into the lobby. Thank you all for being here after this time. If you still have questions, the chairs are gonna be around. They'd love to answer those questions for you. You might be able to catch Tom and Alan also from the finance and trustee side of it. But God is big enough, y'all. Let's see what he's gonna do, okay? Now, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes. If you'll pray with me. Lord Jesus, you are invited to come into your building because this is yours. We heard our name called, and we have declared with our voice that we are going to be a house of prayer. And when I was sitting, listening to the presentation, you kept nudging me with a question, whose money is it? Whose money is it? It's your money, Father. You own it all. You've given the money to us to use, and you tell us we can ask for wisdom. We are coming to your altar tonight and for the rest, rest of days of our life, and we're asking for wisdom. We're asking for wisdom on how you want us to use your money to grow your kingdom. It's not about us. It's what you want. We yield ourselves to you tonight. We yield ourselves and say, our hearts are open, our ears are open. Speak, Father, and we will obey. In Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.